We're going to go ahead and call me to order Personnel Committee, March 17th to 2:05 PM. Ms. Sarah can do a roll call, please.
Nancy Barker, Jeff Barrett.
Here.
Glenda Davis.
Here.
Joshua Gill.
Here.
Robbie Palmer.
Here.
Charles Dacker, and Sybil Von Trina. We have four members present constituting a quorum.
Okay, since Personnel Committee hasn't met this year yet, we're going to go ahead and do a reorganization of the committee. And I'm looking for nominations for Chairman of the committee.
I nominate Nancy Barker.
Is that a second name? All right.
Move nomination cease.
Okay, nominations have ceased. We've got a nomination for Nancy Barker for Chairman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, since Nancy's not here, I have to take nominations for Vice Chairman.
I nominate Robbie Palmer.
I'll say.
I nominate nomination for Robbie Palmer, second by Josh Gill, motion made by Glenda Davis.
Move nomination cease.
Nominations have ceased. All right, all in favor of Robbie Palmer, Vice Chairman, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Mr. Vice Chairman, you can take it and do the secretary.
I'm the mayor. All right, we do need nominated secretary, open the floor for nominations.
I nominate Glenda Davis.
Second?
Say.
Second by Commissioner Barrett. Anybody else?
Move nomination cease.
All in favor of Glenda Davis being Secretary, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
You'll be happy to know you've been nominated Chairman and approved Chairman.
That's why she's late, she's trying to get out of.
In that situation.
Let the record reflect that our Chairman has entered meetings 2:07, Nancy Barker. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, sir.
We're down to approval of Nancy.
I got one, if I can get one. I've relocated my office. So I can run in here and get anything.
Yeah, anybody comes in looking for Sarah anymore, she's in Jane's office.
I'm where I started.
Okay, I apologize for being late, I was on the call, I could not get on. Sarah, thank you for calling us.
You're welcome.
That prompted them to hang up. Okay, where are we at?
For a little minutes.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for March 7, 2024.
Second.
Any discussion?
There's quite a few copies on the table.
I got them, sorry. All right, if not, do I entertain a motion to accept the minutes as approved? I mean, a motion, I mean, all in favor. Okay, all right, are there any public comments from the office?
Any public comment?
All right, then we'll move on to order business, and the first one is our luxurious mayor, Martin Witt.
Well, thank you, Nancy, appreciate that. I just wanted to say that I tried this last year and it went down in flames. But I'm going to try it again this year because situation has not changed in our office. Everybody's working harder than they've ever worked, and they're working at least eight, sometimes 10, 12 hours a day. And we're still on the 18, 20 hour pay scale for just about everybody. And I'd like to move them to the 20, 80 where they work 40 hours a week. Not suggesting any raises for anybody, just be paid for the hours that they actually work. So instead of working a seven hour, being paid for a seven hour day and working 12 hours, I'd like to have them paid for an eight hour day and working what they normally work. There's still nothing to get paid for everything they work, but everybody in this office really supports everybody, if somebody needs help, they jump in, and a lot of times, people are here until 6 o'clock, 7 o'clock in the evening. So I don't know what I really need from this committee, other than maybe approval to send it on to the Budget Committee.
How many employees is it total?
I knew you were going to ask me that. Let's see. And last year, we were going to do that for the maintenance folks too, and they went ahead and did that for maintenance, but they left off everybody else in the office. Six, right?
Would that include Stephanie?
No, Stephanie still works seven hours.
Stephanie still works?
Works seven hours. She comes in at eight and leaves at four.
Then that would be five.
That'd be five. I'll leave Stephanie on the 18, 20. Y'all are too quiet.
So this would just exactly what we discussed last year. And I think I supported that last year till everything got so contentious, and because I do understand they're going to be paid for what they work. And they accrue comp time, but they ain't got no time to take comp time.
Right.
That's what we discussed last year.
Exactly.
Do we happen to know what type of price increase?
I'd have to get Eric to figure it out, but I mean, that's more of a Budget Committee thing, and you're just kind of approving it in principle, and then we'll figure it out for the Budget Committee.
Well, I think it's worth considering.
Yeah.
I think it is, I don't think it needs to die here, I think it's worth considering. How it paid for, it's another conversation, right? That's.
But this, as you all said, moving on doesn't mean it's been passed.
Of course, yeah.
I'd just like to be able to talk to Budget Committee about it during Budget Committee.
Yeah. So how would you like the motion stated, Matt? You want to refer it to the?
Personnel Committee has approved that the 20, 80 scale be considered for the Mayor's Office staff.
Okay, all right, I'll make that motion, the 20, 80 pay scale for five employees at the Mayor's Office will be considered at Budget here or for the Budget Committee.
I'll say that.
Cheer someone?
Wherever you want me to go.
Okay, is there any discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, most.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Mr. Manning.
Similar consideration.
Give me just one second. Did we make great price for where it is made?
You should know.
Okay, would you take it, any opposed?
Didn't we approve this last year?
We approved one thing point last year, but it didn't.
Right, so we want to come back and talk to this.
Thank you, Mike.
Please, when it comes to.
I think it's better.
Okay. I think that was approved.
She's on 18.4.
That's right, yeah.
She stepped in 18.4. So I'm coming for a couple of reasons. One, because as I was thinking about this, and I still get questions from commissioners and others about what our office does, I said, well, let me kind of break it down, what our office does. And Tennessee Department of Veterans Services actually does a pretty good job across the state of ranking the counties based on their Veteran Service Office. So those are the first numbers you see. According to the Tennessee Department of Veterans Services, Hawkins County has approximately 23,798 veterans. That's not very accurate, we probably have closer to about 5,000 to 6,000, but they pull those numbers from healthcare enrollment, healthcare being through VA, and many veterans, especially Vietnam veterans, have never enrolled in VA healthcare. And I still do that to this day. Compensation pension, which is also called disability for the VA, is veterans that were injured, hurt, wounded during their service that come into my office, and we file a claim on their behalf through the VA. $42.6 million comes back into this county through VA disability. That money is federal income, tax-free to the veteran. That money comes back into this county, and on average, if you go by our current veterans population, that's about $11,000 per veteran that comes back into this county. And the average workdays I broke down, the only reason I broke that down is because I wanted to get an idea of how many veterans, on average, a day we serve. And so if you look at the numbers, we serve, it's on the back, but we serve about three veterans a day. That seems like nothing. What you don't get in that number is everything I listed on the second page here, is what does that equate to? Well, it's three disability claims a day, but that doesn't count the phone calls, the families, the spouses, the widows, funeral homes, hospitals, primary care managers that call us, asking questions or needing assistance for veterans, widows, family members. When you look at the numbers across the state for our office, we're ranked 27th overall. Our population is approximately 6.69% of the total population of the county. I already talked to you about $42.6 million that comes into Hawkins County from disability through VA, that's number 23 in the state. $77.8 million total is for not only disability compensation, but it's also veterans' healthcare costs, et cetera, come back to our veterans in this county. So like I said, on average, $11,231 per veteran comes back into, that ranks us 16 out of 95 counties in the state. State average is approximately $9,000 per veteran. We spend, on average, approximately 66 minutes per veteran, the state average is approximately 39. What does that mean? Well, when we break that down, what that means is I take the time to not only research what's going on with the veteran, pull up historical documents to better assist that veteran, but I also, and this is the biggest difference for our office and any other county in this state, and I'll make a comparison and show you a couple of things about the surrounding counties. When we bring a veteran into our office, we follow him or her from the inception of the claim through the completion of the claim. As a matter of fact, as soon as I see something in the Veterans Affairs computer system, I call that veteran, or Brandy calls that veteran, to notify them of the decision that's been made. Nobody else does that. It's called personal care, that's what we do. That's the difference between us, Hamlin, Sullivan, Granger, who, by the way, doesn't have a Veteran Service Office. If you pull up their phone message right now for Granger County, it'll say, we currently don't have a Veteran Service Officer, please go to Hawkins County. Hamlin County, part-time, I use that term loosely, sometimes is probably the better term for that Veteran Service Officer, but he works part-time. If you break down the grades and steps for comparable counties to Hawkins County, Chestnut County VSO salary is $45,000. They're no longer in the office, they quit. They were in the office for one year, making more than I make. The Carter County VSO salary is approximately $46,000. He's been in the office the past seven years, also more than I make. Hamlin County VSO salary, part-time, if you break it down by step, also makes more than I. I'm not asking for a raise for myself, I'm asking for a raise for Brandy. And why I'm asking for a raise for Brandy is because she will have been here 18 years. Next month, she's had one step increase the entire time she's here, and she can never get a step increase again unless the pay scale is modified, which I've heard for four years I've been working here. So if you want to compare our office to other counties that are approximately the same size, that we bring in more money to the county, or if you want to compare us to parer counties like Sullivan, that has a primary and a deputy that both make more than I do, and by the way, they only take appointments, and the overflow comes in. The Hancock County VSO still files paper forms, works part-time out of the American Legion over Hancock. The two-fold point of this is, yes, I want to give you all this information for what the VSO does, but it's also an argument to try and get a raise for my deputy to properly compensate her for what she does in this office. And the reason I did this, to show you what this office does, is because I think it's overdue, and when I asked Brandy if Danny ever did it, when he was in the office, she said no, and I went, well, the commissioners need to know what we do, what we bring to the county, and what it means to this county for that money coming into the county. That's Mike Titch, happy to answer any questions.
She does receive, we do COAs, cost of living adjustments, that does apply to her pay, is that correct?
She gets a COVA.
Correct.
We don't take comp time, and we work seven hour days too, and we would not be included in the marriage proposal.
Got you.
Mr. Manning, so would you be asking us to go to a pay grade eight, step 10?
For Brandy, no, I'd be asking you to a pay grade eight, step seven.
Just one question, Paul. Pay grade eight, step seven, yearly salary is $43,863, and that's an increase from So almost $2,000, a little under $2,000. I'll make a motion to send it through the Budget Committee.
I think it's going to make, for interest, so you basically mentioned your salary.
Yep.
Is that correct? It's going to be interesting, if we're no longer in this position, how this affects recruitment in the future, that would be my only concern, you know?
What's the concern? I'm sorry.
If you're hiring someone to run an office, and the person working for you makes the exact same as you do. Right? Now, that doesn't matter to you, but if you're not, one day, years down the road, if you're no longer in that position, right, and we have to recruit someone, and we say, well, listen, you're going to make the same as this as the person working for you, I'm not sure that everybody would be as appreciable to that, right, which could.
So the other thing is, one of the things you have to look at is experience alone. So the only difference between a deputy, a Veteran Service Representative, depending on which officer and what they call them, is the VSO has to be a veteran, by state law, period, end of discussion.
Yeah.
Okay? So the Veteran Service Representative, the deputy to Hamlin County, she just got hired on, so credited just like Brandy. It took them three years to fill that office role. They couldn't get anybody in there to get a credit to take the position. Although she makes a little bit less than the VSO, both those positions are more than Mike herself.
Right, yes.
Under Temple, I agree with you, Commissioner Gill, I think it would, you know, make it harder to fulfill his position. Brandy knows that position by the back of her hand, and if something were to happen to Mike, and he had to take the leap of absence or had to cut down to the position, until we can get that position filled, we'd do got almost 4,000 veterans that were serving. Yeah.
Well, you definitely offer impeccable service. I've called your office a couple of times for some folks, and you're very responsive and do a wonderful job. So my concern is nothing to do with the service that you provide or Brandy. My other concern would be, so, yours is a little different. So the other courthouse offices that are elected officials, you're not elected, right? Your.
So it's different across the state, none of them are elected officials.
Right.
Some are appointed by the commission, some are directly appointed by the mayor. So Granger County, for instance, was appointed directly by the mayor. Apparently, he was a friend of the mayor, he lasted about four months.
Yeah. Got you. I was just curious, because my question was going to be, if you look at similar departments across the county, and you look at, because you're opposite, and the only one with a deputy.
Right.
And how is their salary compared to the person running the departments, which, it's hard to say, I guess, because she's been here almost 20 years.
Like I said, if there is a way for her to get a step increase, not COVA, remember what COVA is for, and by the way, it hasn't even matched inflation over the past couple of years, but an actual step increase, so that she gets a salary increase every two years or a year based on the pay scale, that'd be great, but she can't, she's been here too long, according to the pay scale.
Which is typical in lots of jobs, you know, that's not a part of the cross compromise section.
No, but there's usually an ability to either be promoted, so you open up a different set of steps or some other means to get additional raises.
Mike, when you started, just out of curiosity, Brandy did today, I apologize, was that office a full-time office when you started, or was it a part-time office?
It's a full-time office, but it's seven hours, it's not eight hours.
But it's five days a week?
Mm-hmm.
And it always has since you.
It's always been a full-time office.
Because at one time, I know it was part-time, so that's what I was trying to go.
Not mine.
It was three days a week, I think.
I'd have to give, I asked Brandy the question, I don't think since Brandy's been here, it's been a part-time. Maybe when Bill McMakeham before Danny was here, it was part-time.
Somewhere in the back of my mind, and correct me if I'm wrong, at one time, was there not some kind of unspoken policy that the veteran officer had to make more than the deputy, if we not go through that at one time?
Larry Klaas brought that up and said he didn't think it was right that the VSO may equal to or less than the deputy. So I just want to be clear, if you offered me a raise, I'm not going to deny it, but I'm not asking you for a raise, I'm asking you for a raise for Brandy.
Mike, does the state help with salaries at all, do they contribute if it's a mandated position?
No. So the state has proposed, but it's been from the state Congress multiple times, that there would be an established minimum, which they're proposing $50,000 per VSO position, but it's never passed. Mike, if you, when your office helps veterans from surrounding counties, does those surrounding counties contribute to the action? I know I put it on your sheets there, so Thursday afternoon, I was going to go out to the tour of Cardinal Glass, but I couldn't go because two veterans drove from McMinn County to sit down with me specifically because of our reputation for helping veterans. McMinn County has Veteran Service Offices. But no, we don't get compensated for assisting veterans outside of the county, outside of the state, which both of us can do, and we get a lot of those because veterans that come up here, spend six, seven, eight months, go to Florida or wherever else, they'll refer veterans that they come in contact with and go, hey, by the way, you need to call down.
What other unique thing this is, she's his only employee.
That's true.
So she doesn't, she fits under this salary scale as that office, is that what I'm hearing?
What do you mean?
That she, he said something about she didn't get anything but a COVA raise this year.
She's maxed out.
Maxed out this year.
She's been maxed out for multiple years, she can never, unless she gets a step increase granted, she'll never get it.
He's suggesting she move up a level.
Right. So she's working at that salary, $41,955, current salary, 35 hour week, $23 an hour is what she's, does that sound right to you?
$23.05, no.
Okay.
Well, what we're looking at is pertaining to somebody for what they're worth.
Yeah.
I think, I mean, for a $1,900 difference, someone that can fulfill this role immediately, Mike, were to have a medical event right now and unable to fulfill this role, I think this would be well worth it. And you know, this highlights another problem that I have with the pay scale, I mean, you get a good employee that stays here for 15 years, and Sheriff, you say it too, I mean, they can't do anything.
Somebody that's loyal to the job, to the county, doesn't get rewarded for it.
Excuse me, can I put in a personal comment here?
Yeah.
Hey, I don't know the VSO, I've never met you. I'm retired Master Chief, Navy. Just to give you all an idea of the importance of the VSO, here a few years back, my dad was dying, he was a 23-year veteran of the Air Force. I stopped by the VSO office in the county, not this county, just to check on the funeral arrangements, and the VSO looked at me and said, what's he dying of? I said, old age. He said, what exactly? I said, diabetes. He said, did he ever serve in Vietnam? I go, yes. He says, fill out this paperwork, get it signed, get a postmark before he passes, so your mother will be able to get a veteran's widow's indemnity due to his exposure to Agent Orange. My mom didn't know anything about it, my dad didn't know anything about it, I got that big work he had, I got a postmark the day before he died, and then two months later, she got her VA check for the next 20 years, and it helped her out so much financially. So the importance of having somebody as a VSO to help out not only veterans, but their widows also, somebody's, give this lady a pay raise.
My input, thank you.
All right, questions been powerful, I have a motion, and we move this forward, what's the wishes of the committee?
I don't remember the motion.
There was a motion, I don't have a second. I have a second. Okay. You say it, dear. This is true, right now, to the Budget Committee, is that what you said? Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion ready. Thank you. Okay, next to the Straddle here. Hello, Sheriff.
He's playing with Mickey and Pluto right now. He's already texting me.
Let's see the trail on here.
He's playing with Mickey and Pluto right now. He's already texting. This is probably the easiest one for you.
Thanks, Mike.
We'll have to ease it. Thanks for that.
This is for the purpose of addressing the DUI grant. And all I need is from this committee is, we need a policy. And all we want to do is, our goal is pay time and a half for any work that's done during this DUI grant, regardless when it occurs. And this makes the process simpler. Put a time sheet, encourage your deputy to participate in this program. The government's obviously safety required, we have a policy. So if y'all just approve this, that's all we need, is the policy sent in, because it don't compensate any money to the county. The government's obviously safety pays that. We've got to have this policy and that's something that you just came up with. And I said, the money's coming from the government's safety, y'all grant. Just make y'all a permit, establish a policy, don't go any farther than this committee, just y'all approve the policy.
You said you already have a policy.
We don't have one. When y'all approve this, that makes the policy.
Completely, completely funded from the grant from the state.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's just money.
And what is this encouraging officers to work on, Sheriff? So you said it encourages them to participate in the program or whatever. What, what do you mean by that?
Sometimes that bill of law paperwork, getting like food with it. It's the name, it's all more than that, not true. It just makes it normal. Paying half regardless of what their duties are, mom is going to get this grant. And the money's paid by the grant. Just need to prove the committee.
It's going to cost no money. Ain't no hidden fees, fine crunch, Sheriff.
No.
Okay.
No, I don't know the reason. The government's obviously said, we need a policy to approve this. So that's why I'm here.
Well, I don't think they'll be, because it's going to pay our officers more, is what you're saying.
They're making time and a half on everything instead of straight time on something. Regardless of what the duties are under this grant, pay, pay time and a half.
How long's it granted for?
It goes from October, starts in October and goes for a year. We renew it every October. It's for them to work. They work in the evenings just for DUIs.
Okay, it's a renewal.
And it's like overtime.
Right, they'll ask for any calls or anything unless it's actual emergency, but they're out there on the roads looking for DUI vendors, speeders, and stuff like that.
He has no match in the county.
No, it's just restricted government.
You know why we're asking, because we don't get a lot of.
That's why I told you, it's eight twenty.
It's a renewal, well, every year, I guess, it is a renewal.
Yeah.
That would be ours for a few years.
Is there anything that would stop the county from being granted a renewal?
No. Well, listen, again, state, Tennessee stopped it.
And if it's not renewed, renewed, the policy says they have to work for that program.
Got you.
So if it's not renewed, that program's not there.
Right.
Okay, so what's the wishes of the board?
Make a motion.
I make the motion. You're going to do what he wants to do.
Adopt that policy.
Yeah, adopt that policy, yes. Second.
I'll say it.
Any other discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
That's all. Okay, that would clear the room.
Red, Red's not.
Oh, Red, Red's not.
No, he said, sorry, I sent it to you on your phone. We talked about it, but I decided against it for right now. He's going to present to the budget committee. But his, his request was approved last year and paid on the budget, so I guess you all have approved it, so.
He and I talked and I, I mean, I tend to agree with him. We already approved it.
Right.
But it failed on the budget. He should go back to the budget, not to personnel necessarily. So that could be some of my fault.
Well, yeah, well, he, he mentioned to me that he might eliminate a couple of them and just ask for one this year. So that's why I was giving him an opportunity, if that's what he wanted to do.
Got you.
Okay. I don't see any more, anything else on the agenda, in the order of business, so I'll make a motion to the chairman.
Second.
Who was first?
How loud do you want me?
All right, on favor, is there?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next group, three slots.
I wonder if that green cover is higher than the taxes. Because that would be a cost.
Covers everything. We pay for nothing.
So does that need to be in the motion?
It's what it is now.
So you can get your policy, is that what you're doing?
They have to work forty-two and a half hours a week from Sunday to, from Monday to Sunday. They have to work forty-two and a half hours to make time and a half.
But you need the motion to include that so you can show it for your policy, that's the question.
I don't think so. I think the big difference is just where they can have forty hours. Whether they get time and a half, whether they work twelve hours a week or whether they work seventy, so I don't think so.
And so you think.
It just needs to say that it's approved for them to get a half on all DUI.
I'll bring you.
So all time worked on the DUI grant.
And I say, whatever I say. So I thought I should approve policy for the officers working for the DUI grant to get time and a half.
Yes.
For any work.
For any work, okay, yeah.
And sometimes I don't think about this stuff till I start writing down. But I'm thinking, okay, in a minute, if it's retirement and taxes, it goes with that.
We'll include all of that. This morning, this weekend.